Okay, we'll call this meeting of the City Council to order. We'll begin with the roll call.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Papesku.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Perry-Duper.
Present.
Mayor Rigsby.
Here.
Councilman Leonard is absent. There is a quorum.
Thank you. We had a workshop. I don't think there's any reportable items from that. It was a public meeting. We will start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilman Daley, please rise.
Please bow your heads before me. Father God, we come to you thanking you for many blessings that you continue to provide upon us. We thank you now for the privilege that we have to live in this free country. With all of its challenges and foibles, it is the land of the free. And we also thank you for the special privilege of living in our little city of Loma Linda. And we ask that you will guide our discussions and our deliberations today and help our city to thrive. We thank you for these blessings. In your name we pray. Amen. Please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted? No, sir. Would the public like to speak on any items not agendized? I have one request for a discussion on an agendized item. Anybody on a non-agendized? Okay, no takers. Then we'll proceed to our numbered items on our agenda. Presentations first. One A, Glenn Savick. Where's Glenn? There he is. Don't recognize you out of uniform. Yeah, Glenn's one of those guys, when you look at the old, old pictures back in the station, he looks like a teenager. So, we've seen him through his whole career. You started about a year before I arrived in Loma Linda as a paid-call firefighter, 1982. And then you became full-time in 1985 as a firefighter trainee. You promoted through the ranks. By December '86, you were firefighter. By June of '88, engineer. And captain in September 2003. Along the way, you were firefighter of the year, 1996. That was a good year. And we thank you for your service. We have an item for you, if you'll come forward. The famous Loma Linda lamp.
Mayor, as a tradition in the fire service when, and council, sorry. As a tradition in the fire service, when a firefighter retires, we do a last page-out on the radio system. And I believe we have that technology. No, you can't do that. All right. So I'm gonna imitate what it sounds like. So Glenn has been a valued member of this fire department and has been a dedicated employee to the city. It's gonna be very, very difficult for us to replace him. And Glenn, thank you so much for your service. And it's been an honor for me to be able to work with you the past couple of years. Thanks so much.
Thank you. So, short story. When I moved here in 1972, as an Air Force brat, we, my uncle took me through Loma Linda. And he said, "Over there's Loma Linda. They don't eat meat and they go to church on Saturdays." And I thought, "Wow, that's really strange." I thought, "Maybe you have to have a pass card to get in." Little did I know that in '74, I got hired by the medical center. And I worked in the medical center from '74 until '85, when I got hired here full-time, in between the kitchen and maintenance. I thank Peter Hills for hiring me. You know, some of the names you've, some of you have all heard. I thank Gene Brooks. Gene was a very stubborn individual. People would just think he was just a mean person. And yeah, he was. He was. But at the same time, I saw a side of him when we were going through our tragedy with my first daughter having the heart transplant. And Gene would visit us in the hospital. And I saw a very compassionate Gene Brooks. So that's something that a lot of people won't see. So, and I thank the city at that time. The entire city was so helpful to Marla and I and Kelsey. And put us through it. I had guys working for me that I didn't have to pay back. So I still was earning a paycheck. I was very appreciative of that, we all were. And we got through that. And so, that was sort of a bad time in my career, but in my family life. But we got through it with the help of the city again. I worked for a captain, Victor Padilla, who died here, died of cancer in 2008. He was my captain since day one. And him and I were like Mutt and Jeff. And we got along great and did our job good. And it was hard losing Vic. He died in 2002, or eight. The highlight of my career was the day Chief Gillette got his engineer's badge. So it was back a couple ranks. And the day, it was the same day I got my captain's badge was when the Grand Prix fire started. An hour after Chief Crawford, someone else I forgot to mention. I like Roland Crawford, too. Very nice guy. Hour after he gave us our badge, we took off on the Grand Prix and we were gone for, the old fire and Grand Prix fire. So we were gone for 13 days or 14 days, or whatever. That was a highlight of my career. We, you know, as a captain, yeah, I'm the boss. But when I have my crew, we're coworkers. And, you know, I always would ask for, "Hey, what do you think of this?" You know, to a fireman or an engineer. And that's kind of how I rolled. And that's how it worked for me. And I hope it worked for our crew. And, you know, I'm not trying to give advice, but that's how I made it through. And I made it through, of course, with Marla's help, you know, in a lot of ways. So, but the send-off you guys gave me a month and a half ago was awesome. The, had a really nice cake goodbye thing in the community room. And the gift that was given to Marla and I was, we very much appreciate it. And so, thank you very much. Any questions? I know this is a big meeting.
You can come back as a volunteer anytime, sir Glenn.
I saw that on the card, Jarv. Thank you.
He's always trying to save a buck, isn't he?
All right. Thank you very much.
And a shout-out from me to Marla, too. She and my wife work together. Okay, item 1B, Donate Life Month, April 2016. Is there Ina Brown with One Legacy? Come forward. The proclamation is for DMV Donate Life California Month, April 2016. And one of the whereas is says, "Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as the greatest expression of compassion to those in need. And each year, millions of lives are saved and healed by donors of organs, tissue, marrow, and blood, and multiple other whereas is. Therefore, I declare on behalf of this entire City Council, the month of April 2016, DMV Donate Life California Month. And come forward for the proclamation." Go for it.
I am a living donor. I donated kidney about 29 years ago to my daughter when she was almost three. She just received her third kidney transplant on January 2nd. She's doing great. She just went back to work last week. So there is a need for both living donors and people who sign the registry or sign up through the DMV, your pink dot. There's over 122,000 people still waiting for a life-saving transplant. So it is a very personal choice. But if you are so inclined, please think about it. Talk to your loved ones. You can make a difference in someone's life. And it's a great way to recycle yourself when you are no longer on Earth. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Item 1C is Child Abuse Prevention Month, also April 2016. And Lesford Duncan is here. With the County San Bernardino Children's Network. And the proclamation states, the first whereas is, "In recognition of the right of all children to receive the care, protection, and guidance a family provides, the right to be free from harm and to have their physical, emotional, and educational needs met. The state and federal governments have proclaimed, and of course, local, have proclaimed April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month for the purpose of promoting community involvement in preventing child abuse." And then there are some statistics about referrals. Thirty-two thousand children referred to the County Department of Children's Services for suspected child abuse in 2015. So it's a very large number. And therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Loma Linda, on behalf of the entire City Council, do proclaim April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And come forward.
Well, good evening. Thank you again to the City of Loma Linda for your ongoing support around child abuse prevention and for, again, proclaiming April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. I bring greetings both as a resident of Loma Linda as well as a child abuse prevention coordinator for our county and bring greetings on behalf of all of the partners acknowledged in the proclamation. So, one of the things that we really want to emphasize, and that number, 32,000, more specifically, 32,631 referrals in the County of San Bernardino in 2015 is an increase. It's one of the largest numbers that we've seen in San Bernardino County's history. That means two things, or it could mean two things. It could mean either that child abuse is growing in our community, which we believe is very likely, or it could also be that there's an increase in awareness. And more people are reporting child abuse to our children and family services. We really emphasize child abuse every year during the month of April and throughout the year because we recognize that child abuse in all of its forms, including physical, sexual, emotional, and neglect, has a negative impact on the child, not only in childhood, but well into adulthood. The studies conducted by Doctors Vincent Falletti and Doctors Robert Ande, the ACE Study, the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study, really makes that strong connection and really shows us that child abuse, childhood adversity, not only makes our city less healthy, but it actually makes our communities less safe as well as less productive. We know that individuals who've experienced severe adversity carry that trauma with them well into adulthood. And it has huge ramifications on our entire society. That said, we're continually grateful for Loma Linda's support, both the City of Loma Linda as well as the Loma Linda University Medical Center as well as the Children's Hospital for ongoing partnership in our efforts to really get this campaign, this message out. That said, I wanted to report on some local statistics. The number of referrals in Loma Linda has actually gone down. In 2014, we received over 200, well, we received 228 referrals from the City of Loma Linda. In 2015, we received 211. That said, every child matters. Every case of abuse matters. And so we're trying to get that number down to zero. So again, we thank you for your ongoing support. And I wanted to go around and provide the mayor and each of the City Council members and city staff with a blue ribbon acknowledging this month as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And hopefully you wear it proudly. Thank you again. Any questions? Thank you.
And item 1D is Parental Alienation Awareness Day, April 25th this year. Is Martin Lacks. It looks like he's unable to attend the meeting. But he's the one who inquired of our willingness to do this. This proclamation is, "Whereas parental alienation, sometimes called hostile aggressive parenting, is a behavior by a parent or other trusted adult that could create alienation in the relationship between a child and a parent. And whereas this can be mild and temporary or extreme and ongoing, and whereas making the community more aware of it, how it works and how damaging the behaviors are to children, more people can help deal with the problem. It's intended to increase the knowledge and understanding to help parents and caregivers better raise their children. Therefore, I, Mayor, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim April 25, 2016, as Parental Alienation Awareness Day. And we will send this proclamation to the offices of Martin Lacks." Item 2 is a public hearing. For an extended stay hotel consisting of 63,000 square feet, 95 rooms, a meeting room, a pool, exercise, and breakfast facilities. Community development.
We have Natalie Patty from Lowburn Corporation to do the presentation.
Good evening, City Council members. I'm Natalie Patty with Lowburn Corporation. And today, we're going to be reviewing a conditional use permit, also a variance, and master sign program for the extended-stay hotel. It occurs on an approximately three-acre vacant site. The hotel is proposed at 63,000 square feet and three stories and 95 rooms. And here's a vicinity map. It's just south of the I-10 freeway, west of Richardson Street, and north of the existing hotel, Holiday Inn, right here. And project access would be provided by Richardson Street via a 30-foot driveway. And in addition, access is also provided on Redlands Boulevard, right here, at this little finger. And emergency secondary access would be provided over here by additional commercial development to the west, the Harley-Davidson dealership. The proposed project, of course...
So where was the main entrance then?
The main entrance is actually going to be right here on Richardson. This is our main entry. Right here is an existing city water pump.
When the guests come in, that's where the lobby is and everything else?
Yes, sir.
What is that right in front of the, your yellow boundary line, kind of in-dense in there? What is in front of that? I'm not sure.
That's a well site. The city well site.
City well site. So it'll go in around through the city well site?
No, there's a driveway to the south of that.
Okay. But will the city well site then be fixed up in any way with landscaping?
We have block wall right now. And yes, we can...
The well site has landscaping and the proposed project has landscaping and trees up against the well site to kind of screen it and hide it. And then the same parties own both hotels. So there'll be reciprocal access off of Redlands Boulevard and Richardson. But the defined main entrance will be Richardson. But there'll also be access off Redlands through the existing hotel property.
Okay. Because this Richardson is the street I used to get over to Costco from where I live.
Yes, me too.
And it's never looked very good right there. So I assume there'll be some landscaping. But since the boundary wall is inset, I'm not sure who's responsible for what.
It's a way for, to get a little screening, a little bit of landscaping around that, yeah.
Later on in the presentation, good evening, City Council. Later on in the presentation, there's a landscaping sheet, I'm sure.
Okay. I don't mean for you to have to jump the gun on your presentation.
No, that's okay. And so, if I can see that pointer real quick. So this right here that says "not a part" is the city's existing well site. And that would be the defined main entrance. And as you can see, we have three sets of landscaped buffered along the entrances and also along the east, sorry, the west side of the well and also behind it. So we've done pretty much as much as we possibly can to try and screen off that area. I'll stand by to answer any other questions.
So the proposed project is a conditional use permit so that the hotel can serve beer and wine. And in accordance with City Ordinance 719, this service is allowed for hotels that are 50 rooms or more. A variance is required for onsite, for the proposed onsite monument sign and additional wall signs that are requested. And also a pylon sign that will be adjacent to the I-10 freeway. And there is a master sign program proposed, which will detail any of the design criteria proposed for the sites. And again, there'll be a monument sign right off of Richardson, three wall signs on the north, south, and west, and a pylon sign adjacent to 10 freeway. And here is the site plan. Of course, we have Redlands Boulevard down at the bottom and I-10 freeway to the north. And as Haral had just pointed out, although Richardson is the, considered the main entry, it will be attracting a lot of patrons from Redlands Boulevard and the 10 freeway. You'll be able to see the project from Redlands Boulevard. And there's been a lot of beautification around the, to kind of disguise the water pump. So they'll be occupying this rather odd-shaped parcel in the most creative way that they can. And this just is the master sign plan indicating that all signs will be consistent with one another. And SEQUA compliance for the project was completed with an initial study. And it was circulated for public review. And all potential impacts were found to be mitigated to a less insignificant level. And those included impacts for cultural, hydrology, noise, soils, and traffic. Variance findings at that time, as included in the staff report, the height of the proposed freeway gateway sign would be consistent with the existing signage in the area. And proposed signs are necessary for visibility along the freeway and along Richardson due to the existing gradient of the overcrossing right there. Granting of the variance would be consistent with the general plan. And conditional use findings were for the proposed use. The permitted use is, the use is permitted within the East Valley Corridor specific plan. And the hotel would be compatible with existing commercial uses in the area. And the proposed master sign plan would provide a comprehensive site-specific criteria and provide a community continuing of the design of the hotel and will not be detrimental to the mix of commercial uses found in the immediate area. The project was also found to be compliant with Measure V with the including of mitigation measures specific to a Richardson Street on the north and the project boundary to the south, creating an ultimate cross-section width, including landscaping and parkway improvements. And also paying a fair share contribution to the construction of a northbound right turn lane at Mountain View Avenue in Redlands. And improvements at the intersection include an eastbound right turn lane to overlap with a westbound right turn lane. And also, prior to the issuance of building occupancy, the project proponent will construct a left-hand turn lane with a minimum of 150 feet on the length of the northbound Richardson Street at the project access. The recommended maximum turn storage length right there will not exceed 300 feet. And that has to do with the gradient found at Richardson at that point. And here is a look at the elevations. This is the north elevation adjacent to the freeway. And south elevation as viewed from Redlands Boulevard. And east elevations from Richardson. And west elevations, which would be fronting Harley-Davidson and Sprint Honda to the west.
If I could just interrupt you for a second. Go back to your previous slide. It says Town Place Suites. And in my agenda, in all capital letters, it says Extended Stay Hotel. So that's generic. The extended stay is describing the type of hotel it is. But this is, this'll be a division of Marriott called the Town Place Suites?
That's correct. Extended stay is what it is. The product name is a Town Place.
All right. I've never heard of it before. That's why I'm clarifying.
So Marriott has several brands, obviously, within its portfolio. If you've heard of Residence Inn by Marriott, that's an extended-stay hotel. And Town Place... Uh, and Town Place Suites is just one of their, one of their other, uh, extended stay products. Typically, those rooms are a little bit smaller, uh, than a Residence Inn. San Bernardino already has a Residence Inn hotel, so we wouldn't be able to do that here. Uh, but Town Place was available and, uh, for the purposes of the report, I think it was a generically stated extended stay hotel.
And are the amenities, since you own both hotels, are the amenities going to be similar between the Holiday Inn and-
So it depends on what types of amenities, uh, you're talking about. Uh, inside the guest rooms are very different, uh, because inside the Town Place Suites, every room would have an individual kitchen, uh, a cooktop, a full-size refrigerator, a dishwasher, uh, and a, like, a kitchen sink, uh, for example. Uh, and also a microwave, um, underneath the, uh, underneath the cabinetry. Um, whereas at the Holiday Inn Express, none of our rooms have those amenities inside the guest rooms. Uh, in the public spaces, we have some similar amenities with fitness center, an outdoor pool, a guest laundry facility. Uh, but the primary difference between the two hotels is within the guest room itself.
Thank you.
Yeah, just-
Town Place also has a substantial public meeting space.
Yes.
That's a-
Which one?
The, the new, the Town Place has a, and Haral can go into depth on that.
Can't happen soon enough.
Huh?
So it can't happen soon enough.
So we, we're also proposing a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot conference facility. Uh, that's a, that's on the western edge of, uh, of the building.
Is there going to be a wall for noise mitigation or anything like that, being right next to the freeway?
So we, we've had substantial experience with building hotels close to freeways. Uh, in fact, all of our hotels so far have been very near freeways. Uh, and we find that, uh, there, we, the building code as such as it is now is really very efficient and, and reduces quite a bit of noise, especially with the windows, um, that are dual-pane usually. Uh, but for this project, we were actually conducting a sound study as well. And any, uh, findings from that sound study will, will be incorporated, especially on the, uh, north side of the building.
All right.
Just for clarification, so are, are these rooms available for someone who just wanted it for one night?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But that's not, that's not necessarily our primary target market, but yes, it is.
So you anticipate people who stay here will stay as long as, how long?
I mean, there's, there's no limit, necessarily. Uh, there, there are people that will stay at this type of hotel for six months, nine months. Um, but they're, they're here for business. Uh, they're not renting an apartment. Um, and, uh, and some other amenities that are included in this hotel would be like a fire pit outside, a barbecue area to make it seem as much like home as possible because they are away from home for such a long period of time. But the average length of stay for the average guest is somewhere between ten and, uh, seven and ten nights.
And you, you guys are the owners of the other hotels as well? Since you're up here, I just wanted to have a quick question. What's the difference in size between the two hotels?
Uh, so the Holiday Inn Express, I believe, was fifty-three thousand five hundred square feet and eighty-five rooms. This is sixty-three thousand, so about ten thousand more square feet and ten more rooms.
Have you had any, uh, issues at all in your parking lot with Holiday Inn as far as a crime?
Uh, to date, I think we've had probably one or two small incidents, um, related to maybe a car broken into.
The reason I ask is because this particular location is more situated to the north and closer to the Richardson-
Sure.
-bridge. And I don't know what other steps you're going to be taking because there is a fair amount of what I would call interesting traffic going across that bridge on a regular basis. And I just don't know if you're taking any precautions as a result of that.
Yeah, so I think, uh, one of the things that we're going to be doing is increasing the parking lot lighting on this, on this project to, to try and, uh, brighten up the parking lot. Um, I think, uh, but I think once, once the hotel is developed and there's constant traffic, regular traffic, you know, from guests and from staff of the hotel coming in and out of there, it may actually, we're hoping, uh, eliminate some of the interesting traffic, as you call it, coming through the dirt lot and into our property and, and, and going towards Redlands Boulevard. That's what we're hoping for. And, you know, if things get really, uh, really hairy, then we'll have to address it in different, different ways, plus I'll be with security.
Thank you.
It's reputed to be an exit portal for nefarious elements who have sure helped themselves to goods in Loma Linda. Uh, I'm wondering if this might be a good place or time to put in one of those, one of those cameras. Maybe we could, uh, work out some kind of a, an agreement.
What, what type of camera?
Automated license plate reader?
Yeah.
Maybe some equitable sharing?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, a, a plan eventually to have every exit portal from Loma Linda have those license plate readers. And the problem with them is that there's only one lane covered per camera. And the nice thing about Richardson is it's just one lane going out, so that could be a place to start.
Approximately fifteen thousand a lane.
Yes.
One-time fee.
Yeah. Okay. Keep going.
So our landscape plan, I think we went over that a lot. I have more pictures of the species that are proposed along here. Of course, there's extensive, um, species along, um, Interstate Ten, a lot of tall trees. And you can see the retention, detention basin over on the northwest corner of the site as well is going to be scaled back with some taller trees. And so we have California palms and, and most of these, actually, all of these species are drought tolerant. Lot of larger-sized trees, numerous trees. If you, we've also included the numbers on these species that are proposed onsite here. Forty of these, um, box trees. And then, of course, the shrubs are definitely drought tolerant. Um, coastal rosemary, the foxtail fern, and the coral aloe. And additional drought tolerant species as well. I think we got a lot of questions already answered. It came to the end of this. Let's see here. There was four, um, this was outlined in the staff report, but there was one, um, comment letter that we did receive from Caltrans. And although this is an initial study and it's not required to respond to them, we did provide them with a formal response. And, um, pretty much it indicated that almost everything that they had asked for, actually, everything that they asked for was within the traffic report. And the only thing that we couldn't help them with was existing numbers at the access at Richardson and the project frontage because that doesn't exist yet. So they wanted that for, existing data for that, and it's, it's just simply not available to give them. Um, other than that, there were no other comments received.
And just for clarification, this has been, um, reviewed by the planning commission and forwarded with the recommendation for approval from the planning commission.
Good. And, uh, what are you projecting groundbreaking and completion dates to be at this point?
So we hope to break ground sometime by the end of summer. And, uh, construction timetable would probably be approximately twelve months. It could be a little bit longer than that, but, uh, uh, our Holiday Inn Express got open slightly shorter than that, ten, ten to eleven months. So if all things go well, that would be the timeline.
Well, it'll certainly improve the appearance of the property as it stands now, so.
Appreciate that.
Best of, uh, best of luck.
Thank you.
Clearly, you do your demographics, marketing studies to determine the type of folks who would be using your facilities. I'm just curious, could you provide any flavor on who are the, some of the folks who are staying in the Holiday Inn Express? Are they associated with doing business in Loma Linda, the area, passing through?
All of the above, really, and depends on the day of week. So, uh, Sunday through Thursday is, is mostly business travelers. Um, they're coming in for various reasons, whether it's Loma Linda and the hospital or the university, uh, their government in, in, in the county of San Bernardino, uh, or, or, you know, corporations like Amazon and Nordstrom in Redlands. Uh, but they're primarily business travelers Sunday through Thursday. And then Friday and Saturday, a lot of leisure business, uh, whether they're coming for the Orange Show, uh, event center, uh, softball tournaments that are happening in the area. Uh, it's, it's, it's a very, very long list, uh, but it's very, uh, broad.
Cool. The reason I ask is because I'm involved with the airport and we've had Boeing do a number of testing over there. And they brought in a n- number of engineers from Seattle. And I was told by the, some of the staff that a fair number of them had to stay in Redlands. And I was surprised that, because literally your hotel would almost be as close to the airport as you possibly can be, so. But I guess it depends on availability and things like that.
Yeah, and, and I know for a while they certainly were, uh, were using us. And I'm not sure, uh, I'm not sure what happened, or maybe they still are. Uh, I, I don't know for sure. But we did have them for at least a portion of time.
Yeah, well, the, the flights stopped today, actually, so. Probably why you're not seeing them as many and they kind of-
Sure.
Move, you know, they come in waves and they come and go. So, but we're always excited when the airport has more activity because a lot of our hotels do get utilized as a result of that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
I was wondering who owns the land south of this property and east of Holiday Inn Express? We own it?
That would be you.
Sorry, that, that's city property?
And that's where the swap?
Okay.
If you remember, three years ago, four years ago, that was an odd F-shaped lot.
Come back further.
And we did a lot swap so he could get a decent piece. We had a decent piece. That's city-owned property.
Is there any interest in a hotel?
Talk about that vacant, vacant piece?
Perfect for a hotel.
Possibly. Or, or a fire station, I heard, or, I don't know. We can discuss that.
Okay, I think we need to do a public hearing if there are no other questions. And I'll open the public hearing with my trusty hammer. Come forward, all ye who choose to speak. Okay, no comments. I'll take that as a goody-goody gumdrop, so we'll close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the council?
I will move it.
Do we need to enumerate the motions or just staff report?
The motion should include, uh, the four items listed in the agenda. The mitigated negative declaration, conditional use permit fifteen dash five-one-three to allow beer and wine, variance fifteen dash one-three-six for the proposed onsite monument sign, wall signs, and pre-standing sign, and master sign program fifteen dash one-thirty-seven, all, uh, based upon the findings and subject to the conditions of approval as set forth.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, in the staff report, there is a, uh, to adopt a mitigated monitoring and reporting program that we must add to the motion.
Okay.
Correct.
So, uh, I amend my motion, but, um, I did one quick question and a comment before we move forward. Um, will you have onsite catering by any chance for your meeting rooms?
Uh, so, in the bar area, we'll have, uh, limited food service, uh, but we'll, we'll mostly do outside catering for that.
Okay. I, I, I just think it's, um, it's, it's, it's refreshing and kind of a, a welcome just to get the, the meeting space alone. I mean, although I do think we're primed for the, for the housing, for the, uh, the housing and the hotels and all that, um, which is great. But I'm welcoming the, the meeting locations and I know a lot of groups and organizations try to have meetings around town here and it's kind of hard because either you're with the university or you're not, and there's limited choices there, so.
Right.
Um, looking forward to that.
We're certainly hoping for a lot of use.
I'll, I'll second the motion with all the necessary amendments and details as to the various parts, as outlined by our city attorney.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. That's unanimous, four to zero. In favor? Congratulations. You have your approval. Item number three, another public hearing, addendum to program environmental impact report pertaining to a modification of a campus transformation plan from the university. Do we have, yeah, do we have conflict of interest on this?
Uh, yes. Um, I don't recall if we have drawn straws previously on this one. Which story are we talking about?
This is, this is, this- No, this is making the building thir- uh, three stories taller, the big hospital. I don't remember who was on the... Is there any rule that we have to keep the same or we draw straws every time?
This is an amendment to an existing EIR.
Yeah.
The council approved this EIR in, in, if I recall, January, sorry, December of twenty-fourteen, um, for an initial structure. Um, we, the, essentially, when they ended up doing this, it ended up being a, a taller, bigger building. Required an amendment to the EIR. You did draw straws. It was Councilman Lenart, Councilman Daly, and Councilman Duper were on that. Um, it would be up to, that was the original EIR. Um, and so it would be up to the city attorney to determine, since this is a continuation and amendment of that existing one, whether the same people are involved or not. I did speak with the university and representatives of the university. And they are on a time crunch. However, this particular item is not on their critical path right now and will not affect, um, their ability to proceed if it is postponed to the next scheduled meeting.
I seem to recall at some point back, we, we asked for, um, some clarification as to the site, um, the outlook from various levels of, of our residential area to the south. For example, Lawton and different streets, what that outlook was and, and relative to the height of that, that building. You remember?
Yes, and that height. We can show that to you, but it's pretty much aligned with Haron.
I, I remember a discussion about additional need for ambulance parking spaces too, and where those were going to fit.
I don't, I don't know if we can discuss this much with the wrong people in the room.
Those particular issues will be addressed when the PPD... There, there's two pieces to this. Um, one is an overarching campus transformation environmental plan, which encompasses the parking structure, the new hospital, the new entrance, the research building that we haven't even addressed yet, all that work we've talked about on the steam plant and the, the generation facility. So there's a big umbrella that we're discussing now. There is a second discussion that will specifically revolve around the hospital, the ambulance parking, the way that hospital looks, um, entrance egress and whatever, and that is slated to be, um, if we get our answers back from the university and from the construction guys on the next meeting or the meeting thereafter. So what we're really looking at on this one is an overarching, big picture of the entire site, not the specifics relating to the, the building itself. Does that answer what you're looking for?
Well, I, what I hear, what I think I hear you saying is that we need to divide this into two separate projects.
Correct. We have divided into multiple projects, correct.
What we need to do is divide it into projects where I can talk about it and where I can... I would, I would like to, I, I think we need to stop talking about specifics. What, what I'd like to know is how do we deal with the public hearing?
Well, at, at this, uh, stage, uh, since we did draw straws previously as to the environmental impact report, uh, for this program, uh, the better practice would be to continue with the same three who previously participated. And, and they would go forward as to this addendum. Um, in the absence of Councilman Lenart this evening, then, my recommendation would be to continue this to the next meeting. And hopefully those original three would be present.
Is there any kind of a reset clause with an election, an intervening election? Or, uh, because if someone loses their seat, of course, you'd have to redraw straws. But can you redraw straws just because there was an election?
Well, no. And if we were to draw straws, we would have to draw for Councilman Lenart again. And in his absence, we still may not be able to proceed anyway.
Seems like we should have some mechanism in place for this eventuality because it looks as if, if we have some, one person missing, suddenly we can't do business. So we should have some other backup method.
Yes and no, but you know what? I place this squarely on the shoulders of the applicant because the applicant has pushed themselves up against these deadlines where they're now desperate and clawing and stretching.
The applicant is also a very important member of the committee, so I'm not even going to blame them on this. I'm trying to figure out how do we, how do we work as a council to try not to keep pushing the ball down the road just because someone's gone. That, I'm trying to come up with a plan for that.
Unfortunately, the, the rule of necessity is very limited and- rules that is part of that is that you may not apply the rule of necessity to draw straws due to the absence of a member. So, we can't avail ourselves of the rule of necessity if one of those who's not disqualified cannot be present. We would have to wait until he is present. But as to this particular item, my understanding is there's not a time crunch issue.
The applicant is not here. We spoke to them earlier today and let them know that...
Can't be very compelling if the applicant didn't even show up.
Yeah, but they're, like you said, this is not time-sensitive.
It's not on their critical path, so they're comfortable pushing this.
My next question is, how do we deal with setting a date certain, when we're not, we're not really composed of the three deciding people?
Well, we can continue it to the next meeting with no issue as to a conflict.
Okay.
When is the next meeting?
We can, the next schedule is the 26th. We can have a...
So they can wait till the 26th, but they can't wait until the 10th?
They can wait till the 26th. I do not know about the 10th. My discussions with them earlier this afternoon revolved around getting us...
We just bought another April meeting.
Over this hurdle.
Cancel your restaurant plan.
And again, my comments are, and from speaking with staff, is this has become a habitual issue with a lot of these dates being pushed right up to deadlines. And I don't feel comfortable being pressured into making decisions on that type of schedule. So, I was basically, not to have the discussion, but throwing out some of those things about, I was waiting for some more information, such as what we talked about before. And if we're talking about something of increasing size in a building, I still haven't seen that other information that I asked for.
And we can present that as part of the, I'm sorry.
I would concur entirely with you.
And we can present that as part of the addendum packet, yes.
So either way, I would be pushing for a continuance anyway.
So can it go to the next meeting without a vote?
Well, the conflict of interest does not apply to the agendizing of items, so you may move to continue this to the next meeting, irrespective of any conflicts of interest.
And our apologies to people who arrived today and cannot come back in two weeks to do the public hearing.
Correct.
Are there people who can't?
I'm assuming everyone here wants to talk about it. Okay, so is there a motion to, to continue this to the next meeting?
Would we just say table it? Wouldn't that...
No, continue.
Continue it? I'll make a motion. You to April 26th, is that right?
So we should plan on having a meeting on the 26th? I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Confirm with Councilman Lenart then, that he's going to be here on the 26th?
If not, we'll have to do a special meeting.
Just to continue it again?
And I guess, one of the things I would recommend is maybe in the future, since he knew, obviously told someone he wasn't going to be here, that the item should have been tabled. I mean, shouldn't have been put on here.
No, he just told us today, this morning.
He announced today. I got the, I got the same email that he's not going to be here.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so any further discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. That's unanimous. Next, discussion in direction of staff relating to refuse agreement between the city and Republic Services. Councilman Duper.
Well, Councilman Duper asked me to look into the contract that we have with Republic Services with regard to the trash. So, little history is, is back in 2008, the city went out and did a competitive bidding to select the trash services, and we have selected Republic Services. With the agreement is, we have seven-year contract with one, with three one-year option. And up to date, this is the first year that we, that we exercise the first-year option. So this is our eight-year. So we have two more years if we decide to exercise the next two options, or we go out rebid, or we can renegotiate contract with Republic. In addition to that, we, he asked me to do the survey of the sewer, I mean, of the trash rate within our surrounding city. So with assistance from our consultant that helped us, when we went out for bid for trash. So if you can see, our residential rate is the lowest in the valley.
We drove a hard bargain.
And this is up to date, all these, all these numbers are what people are paying right now?
Correct.
Okay.
These, as of last week, it has got this. And it's public information. So we went to, he went to a different city website and pulled this information. So, as you can see, we are, we are the cheapest right now, and it looked like really it's two vendor in this area. Well, three waste management, they don't want to be in this area anymore, they're toward LA County. I think Chino is the last one that they service in this area. So the two major ones is Burt Tech and Republic Services. The two cities that have their own trash pickup is City Ontario and City of Redlands, so.
They're both more expensive. They're still a major deficit.
Their trash doesn't stink.
So, that, what Councilman Duper asked me to prepare and present?
I think this is a testament to, to the hard bargain we drove seven, eight, nine years ago. Yeah.
I have some general comments.
I was just going to say, you know, I believe in an old saying, it's competition breeds innovation. And I think it's important every once in a while to check the numbers and make sure that we're still doing the right thing. And it panned out in this particular case.
Well, the reason it happened, for those of you who were not yet on the council when this happened, but the consultant and the city manager came forward with a proposal to renew with Burt Tech that year at twenty-two or twenty-three dollars per month, with a, with an annual two percent kicker. And we had a proposal from Athens, which is a Los Angeles waste hauling company, at twelve dollars. So we got an offer for twelve, an offer for twenty-two, and the city recommended the I looked at that and said, what? You're, you could save the average person a hundred and twenty dollars a year, and you're not taking, taking that suggestion? And what turned out is it educated me on how cities make their money. So why did we have a twenty-two dollar suggestion? Well, you can spin it any way you like, but the way I looked at it, the first thought that entered my mind was, somebody bribed somebody. And turns out, that's not true. Basically, what happens is, the city gets a twenty percent, thirty percent? What's the franchise fee? How much is it?
I don't know.
Twenty, thirty percent. So twenty, thirty percent of a bigger number is a bigger number. So, you know, there are many other factors that went into it. It was an extremely complicated analysis, but that's what I took away from it. I may be completely wrong, but what we did is, is we basically turned the recommendation on its head, and we asked for a, for everybody to sharpen their pencils, Republic came in at sixteen dollars, which was cheaper than their original bid. Athens stuck with twelve or fourteen or some very low rate, and Burt Tech stuck with their higher rate. And we went with Republic and not Athens, because at the time, we were concerned that Athens would, because they were planning to haul all of our trash down the 91 freeway to Orange County or something like that. And, and it was, and they, they had a very, let's just say, not a robust plan to meet the fifty percent recycling requirement of the state. And the state gives you five hundred dollars, five thousand dollar a day fine, if you don't recycle at least fifty percent of your, of your solid waste. So we were looking at two to four dollars less, and the possibility of not meeting these requirements and being fined. So we went with a compromise with Republic. So the rates we've been paying for the last eight years are way below market. You can see it right here. And I think it's, I'm proud of that moment in my service to the city.
I, I do want to say, though, that if, we shouldn't trade customer service for economy. And so, I know personally, I was reaching out over the last couple of weeks, knowing we were going to put this on the agenda, and asking neighbors and residents what their experience has been. And I want to ensure that we are still meeting that service requirement. And so far, I mean, I've heard things on both sides, but it so far has outweighed on the positive side of the scale. But publicly, I want to say, we need to continue to monitor this, and I think it's important, even at that one-year point, that we bring it back here to the, to the public forum, and we allow people to weigh in on it. Because, you know, we serve at the direction of the community, and I'd like the community to just tell us if they're happy with this. Now, obviously, it's great, we're saving money and people love that, but if they're not getting great service, I want them to tell us that, too.
So I'm looking at exercising the option again for next fiscal year, and don't go out rebid. And if we get to the third-year point, we can renegotiate with Republic and do this survey again, and, but again, it's up to, up to the council, so.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to say anything about it today? Good, bad?
I, personally, I haven't heard from anybody complaining about the service, but then, of course, when it gets to that level where people are calling me, then it's obviously a much bigger issue. I don't know, has you as a staff received complaints or concerns about service in any way?
No, we usually take care of it. If somebody complains because they're late pickup the day after holiday, that's usually the complaint, and as soon as we call, they come pick it up, or just, the day after the holiday, usually, they come out a little later, because they have to pick up.
I don't have a complaint, per se, but I've noticed an observation, which is, the trash pickup doesn't, as far as timing, doesn't seem to be consistent. I know that we get spoiled into expecting certain things at a certain time, but for a long time, in my case, and maybe I'm just unique, if you don't put out your trash by, you know, a certain time, you lose it, you know? They come by and it's done. But as of late, what used to be, for, in our neighborhood, eight o'clock or before eight o'clock pickup of regular trash, may end up being five, six o'clock in the afternoons. And I don't think, I kept track of it, and it was not related to a holiday. It was a regular day. So I don't, I know there are probably days in which they get backed up, someone calls in sick, there could be any number of issues that may cause that. So I'm hoping that, you know, we can pride ourselves or be proud of the fact that we're saving a ton of money, but at the same time, we also want to make sure that, like Phil said, provides good service that's consistent, that people can rely on. So we just want to make sure that they're explaining to us that when there are issues, and what they're doing to resolve them.
Yes, this past Sunday, we have electronic waste pickup at the city hall here, and by doing so, we asked Republic to provide us with a free compost, so they deliver two-hundred bags, a five-pound bag, at the city hall here, and boom, it's all gone, good morning.
I, I'll say something that's probably going to raise our rates, but what I found out recently is that you, as a, as a customer, everybody here in the city, has the right to have their cans exchanged once a year. And my, my cans had been going on ten years, and they were pretty, pretty, pretty bad shape, lots of holes and cracks and issues like that.
Does that mean you get mine and I get yours?
You're supposed to get brand-new cans if you request them, so.
And if you're...
Now, everybody's watching at home, there's going to be run-on cans, and it's going to, but just see...
If you, if you're like I am, and you have lots of recycling, you can get a second recycling bin for free, no extra charge. Come on. Come on up. Come up to the microphone.
I was going to say, my experience with Republic has been good. If there's trash cans that have been mutilated because of people leaving the VA and using that bike lane instead of the regular lane, they sometimes bump into them and destroy them. But if you let Republic know, they come back the next day and give you a new can. And the only time that they're all cracked up is when they squeeze them too hard, or they don't get all the garbage out of it, because it's all compact, and it doesn't fall out. They've been good about taking care of things. Usually, they pick up the trash first, and then they pick up the recycled material, and they have another truck comes in later in the afternoon and picks up the green waste. They've been pretty consistent.
And I want them to know that we do meet the sixty percent recycle rate.
Yeah, and, and my experience with them has been good, that if your trash is hanging out the top, and visibly bulging from the can, and you miss the time when they come through with the first truck, the second truck will take both cans. I think that's good.
That's why you're supposed to have a good neighbor.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the way we do it in our neighborhood.
Yeah. So, thank you for that. Okay, next, we have a public hearing. Item five, Council Bill O-2016-02, first reading, set second reading for May 10, amending section blah blah of the municipal code pertaining to salary for councilmen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at the last council meeting, you asked for information regarding benefits. We tried to give you a good explanation for that. Council members are optional members of CalPERS, and so all current, all current council members have elected a membership, and so pay the seven percent contribution. You are also eligible for the city's cafeteria plan, that is provided to regular employees, which is currently set at eleven hundred dollars per month. So you could elect with that money to either purchase your health and dental or vision insurance, or have that amount deposited to your, the city's 457 deferred compensation plan. It's just that, this is a little hard to explain, but it's just that the deposit to your 457 plan cannot exceed more than a hundred percent of your actual salary. So, if you have your maximum salary set at the thousand sixty-six point seventy-three, which is the maximum you could receive according to the government code, then you could not put in any more than that. Added to this explanation, with the 2009 and 2010 fiscal year, you imposed a twenty percent voluntary reduction to your benefits. So that was basically taken from your salary. So unless you reinstate that, your, whatever salary you elect to have would be twenty percent left. So you'd have to rescind that twenty percent reduction in your, in your action.
Is that reflected in the motion that's in front of us to approve?
Yes, that would have to be part of your motion.
Is that, no, 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 not the motion, I'm sorry, in the actual ordinance detail? I'm looking at it.
It would be a separate...
So it is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So this is your public hearing. You'd have to determine what your actual salary would be, and if you're going to rescind that twenty percent reduction, and then we would set the second reading for the next council meeting.
Okay, any questions? If not, I will open the public hearing. Okay, the public hearing is opened. Would the public like to speak on this item? Come forward. Yes, there's a request from Kurt Swigert on item number five.
Good evening. We today just had our first meeting, joint meeting with the city council, and this actually wasn't annotated on that. And our next meeting is the 20th of this month, and we'd really like an opportunity to review this, and then make some comments on this, prior to you taking any action.
My understanding is, it wasn't on that report, because it wasn't a motion yet.
Okay. It came to, as a surprise to us.
Well, we actually, Dusty and I noticed that as we were looking at the budget as well, that this item was not included in that.
Yeah. Seeing it would be a, an increase into the budget and we would like an opportunity.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
I think, I think you'll get it.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem with that. I mean, we can continue the item until the twenty-sixth, Councilwoman, uh, Bernard would be here as well. But, uh, I, just for the record, we, uh, we did have lengthy discussion about this and the council hadn't received a, uh, increase in compensation for the last ten years. And we talked about how many of us have been very much involved in work that doesn't always reflect for the hour that we see up here. And we spend a lot of time in many other committees that we sit on and travel to many other places to fulfill those obligations. So, I, I think we all agree that it was time to, um, increase those compensations to reflect the increased amount of activity that we're involved in.
But the public still has an opportunity to speak up. So, come forward if you choose. If not, then I will close the public hearing and, uh, the motion would be to, I've been here ten years and I can never get this straight. Help.
This goes to the, this goes to the budget committee next for review and-
No, that's not what he's asking. He, the budget committee wanted to, to, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but you bait, what you said is, this was not shown in the last budget and how it's gonna impact it and you wanna see a little more detail so you can make any commentary if you choose to do so.
Correct.
Okay. And I'm not sure that requires an actual budget committee meeting.
We're actually meeting on the twentieth, so-
Okay, so you're gonna address it then, perfect. The next meeting is the twenty-sixth, so.
Mr. Mayor, the, the action before you tonight is merely to introduce the item, um, and then it would come up for you at the next meeting for, for final action, uh, after you receive your report. Um, it's a little bit of a quirk, uh, in that we have to take final action on this, uh, during the current term of office. Um, so, and then there's a thirty-day time period after you act on it. So, uh, you might wanna just go ahead and, and introduce the item, uh, which is not approval and, uh, move it forward to the next meeting for final action.
And in the interim, the budget committee can take a look and come in with a report of their, of the potential impact of this.
Correct.
Yeah, that works. And we would be able to do that all by a May tenth meeting for action.
I think we're at April twenty-
April twenty-sixth is the next meeting.
Mr. Mayor-
They would-
I'm seeing second reading set for May twenty-
Well, that's because at that time, we didn't, we didn't anticipate a May, or an April twenty-sixth meeting.
Ah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, the, the budget and the budget committee recommendations are expected to be presented to you at, on May tenth, so this could be part of that process on May tenth, if you'd like to continue it to that date.
Does that, so make, still move forward with it and then do the second reading on the tenth?
Yes.
Which anticipates commentary or any changes to it if we decide to make changes to it?
Correct.
Okay. If, uh, do you want consensus or?
Well, I think, uh, do we have to do a motion, second, and vote? To introduce it?
Yes, motion to introduce and set the public hearing for May tenth.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion that we introduce Council Bill zero two zero one six dash zero two for first reading with, uh, setting the second reading for May tenth and amending section two point one, two point zero two zero of the municipal code pertaining to the salary for the councilman. Um, let the record reflect that, uh, we're, uh, gonna be getting commentary from the budget committee on this item, uh, to address any concerns they might have on the impact of the overall budget.
Does the motion to rescind the twenty percent have to come at the same time?
Uh, I would recommend that that be agendized separately at the May tenth meeting.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well.
Okay. So, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous, uh, the consent calendar?
I'll move the consent calendar as it stands.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And, and just a question, Carlton Fisk House renovation, this house comes up-
Curtis.
Curtis, sorry. How come we're still renovating? What, what are we doing with it?
We're looking at, making a museum.
Museum?
Yes, it's in the heritage park.
This is the house to the left of the one that's rented out to the construction firm?
All right, all right.
Okay, so that means that that-
Recently, we, uh, awarded a contract to different, uh, contractor, it's, the city is a prime contractor and we do the work out ourselves. We just, we set up a contract, the whole thing, the prime contractor and they paid out, to the subcontractor, well, we just do it out ourselves. We just save it over here.
Okay, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, I'd like to pull item number nine. Okay, let's go ahead with the vote.
Consider it, Paul. You wanna discuss it a little bit?
I wanna discuss it. Okay, um, so there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no, uh, that's unanimous. No old business, new business, item thirteen, Council Bill O-Dash two thousand sixteen dash zero three, first reading set, public hearing for May tenth, amending the municipal code regarding a hotel incentive program.
This is a first reading only, we will have the, uh, public hearing and discussion, um, on the, I guess on the twenty-sixth now. So, do we need-
Well, should we, as a thought, should we, cause there's some question, are we gonna hold the twenty-sixth meeting? Should we continue most of our business to the tenth? And that way, if something happens with the twenty-sixth, we've got it all properly agendaed.
If you'd like to continue to the, if you would like to set up for the tenth, that would be fine with us too.
That was on the tenth.
Okay, that's, that's fine and we can do that.
So, we're gonna do both, April twenty-sixth and May tenth?
Oh, definitely, yes, the tenth is important.
If there's only one item, don't count on my showing up.
On the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Well, you could show up and sit in back and watch TV.
It's thrilling. It's always nice to see how, how crude our TVs were for all those years. There's a really old TV back there.
So, this is the, uh, first reading for an amendment to the municipal code involving a rebate of transit occupancy tax for, um, triple-A, three diamond hotels to be constructed in the city in the course of the next four years. The tax would, um, essentially be a fifty-fifty split for each, uh, for each room of occupancy. Um, we did an analysis and, uh, decided there's some accommodations for somewhere about seven hundred hotel rooms in the city. Um, with that, there's a, you know, a very large number, but the realistic number is e- each additional hotel room brings in about seventeen fifty-two per year. Um, do you, you wanna read the whole thing, Pam? The whole ti- by title?
That's the next one.
That's it? All right.
Where are we talking about?
Yeah, I'm confused as to, what is it that we have? What is it that we're changing?
This is future projects or?
Future projects only.
Yeah, but I still don't see any numbers associated with it. What, what is it that we're rebating back? What is it we're changing?
The transit occupancy tax, transit occupancy tax is ten percent of the room rate.
Okay.
So, um, and this town place would fall underneath that, uh, category. So, it would have to be a three-star or triple-A, three diamond hotel rated, which has a certain amenities, certain room size and a quality of a hotel. What we're looking for is a, is a higher quality hotel and we would rebate half of that ten percent of the room rate, which we would normally get.
So, do we get any more-
For ten years?
For ten years.
Okay.
And then it sunsets. And it's only for hotels built in a specific timeframe to a maximum number of rooms.
And why are we not negotiating each project individually?
If we do them individually, um, it essentially is a gift of public funds because of rebating that to the individual hotel, which would then trigger prevailing wage, um, which would almost be a punishment rather than a, a benefit for anybody trying to build a hotel. So, the idea is, is we're trying to essentially lure some of the operators out of San Bernardino, especially some of those that are having troubles on hospitality. Um, we have on top of the town place, uh, one other large hotel, national chain, in very serious discussions about acquiring property and two other chains who are, you know, peripherally talking. So, this is, you know, there is a recognition of the need for hotel rooms in Long Melinda.
This applies to not Trump Tower. No, I'd welcome that.
They'd have a presidential suite at the top.
Just, so kind of, help me understand something. The Holiday Inn, we offered a rebate or whatever you wanna call it to that particular development, correct?
I negotiated a much better deal on that one, that's why I asked the question.
Well, no, 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 Mike, what I need clarity on is, we have the ability to rebate back a percentage of that occupancy tax, correct? As the, the policy is in place for that already.
We didn't negotiate any rebates for the Holiday Inn.
There's no rebates for that.
Like I said.
They're, they're full freight.
Okay, so, well, we're-
I negotiated a better deal for us on that hotel, that's why I'm wondering why we can't do that going forward.
Is this contingent on the town place or is, or is town place contingent upon this? Does it?
Um, I don't wanna answer for the developer, I don't know about contingent, but it does affect their, their financial model. And, you know, one of the discussions during the Holiday Inn is, is that we would look at this, at, at some ability for follow-on projects.
So, this is, to make sure I'm clear, this is a two-step process here. We're now establishing with this ordinance that we want, you're asking us to pass, we're establishing a policy by which allows the city to rebate a percentage back, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Secondly, we're putting that threshold that in order to qualify for that, the hotel needs to meet this criteria of a triple-A.
That's correct.
I just wanted to get that clarified.
Yeah, the, the idea is that we don't wanna attract fleabag, low-quality hotels, we, we need a, a, a higher quality product in the city.
Okay.
Yeah, and part, part of the, boy, we need our little fluffy things on here. We're getting puffy with our speaking. Um, part of the reason to put it into this, my understanding is that hotels have a tendency to want, you know, they wanna be the only hotel in town, so they wanna get a deal that nobody else gets and this is a way to just make that not even under discussion.
It is, it is a level playing field for everybody in town, correct?
Yeah.
It is an unlevel playing field for the region, giving us the advantage to attract those guys. And with hotels, there are, you know, follow-up restaurants and other amenities that tend to congregate around them, that the city's in, in need of. And we've probably done much more than introduce it and read it.
All right, I'll move it.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Uh, the public hearing will be next time, so hold your comments. Uh, okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I oppose no. Uh, that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Now, we have item fourteen, designation of delegate and alternate for SCAG General Assembly. Is this the one that Jarv goes to?
It's the one the city members go to all the time.
I was looking for the, uh, the representative from Sandbag to attend, but it's Thursday, so I know you have clinical.
Hey, I, I don't wanna be accused by, there's a, there is a representative of toll-free IE that attends the SCAG, the, uh, the Sandbag meetings and regularly refers to the representatives on SCAG as SCAG hags. So, I don't wanna be accused of being a SCAG hag, but you can be. Jarv.
I, I mean, yeah.
Do you understand, no problem.
It's the only vacation he's allowed to take every day.
Is there, do we have to send an alternate? It's usually Phil.
I'm usually the alternate, but he's always there, so.
Okay, so, you wanna be the alternate?
As long as I don't have to go.
Okay, is there, is there any objection to that? We don't have to make a motion, right? We can just declare it so.
So, I, I take it, besides dealing with SCAG issues, Jarv, is it an opportunity for you to lobby members of Sandbag to move forward on that Mountain View project?
Sandbag is not gonna be there.
I know, I'm assuming that some of the Sandbag members are gonna be present as well at this thing.
He needs to lobby IVDA members.
Well, you, look, Sandbag, Sandbag is not set up for individual motions regarding projects. It has to go through a study and compare itself to other projects to find out where it fits in the priority.
Yeah, but I-
And the, the nexus study determines how much money is paid by us versus others and that we have very little control over.
Well, I, I would agree with you on that, but I think it does require us nudging, nudging them on timing and stuff because part of the reason to pick a new, it took twenty-five years is cause I believe that prior council wasn't proactive enough. So, there are things we can to just speed up certain projects.
This, this is not even in the funding window for the second measure, is it? It's not, it would have to, they would have to do a complete redo of the prioritization. I think it's, I think, I, I'm actually lobbying for that with the people at Sandbag because, you know, you do a study, you do a, a study in two thousand three and expect it to still be valid thirty years later, I don't think so.
No, what, what we're doing here is, I, I met with, with Gary and have conversation with him, what we'd like to do is have, ask Caltrans to start, to start doing the work for us, for, for Sandbag, really. And, and, and so that-
Which means that we need Sandbag's help and collaboration.
Correct. And, and we find out where the money coming from, who's gonna pay for what. But at least, at least we get Caltrans moving on, 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 starting to do environmental and so forth.
What do you call the, the governing officers in Sand, is it president, vice president? Is that what you call them or what do you? Yeah.
Sandbag has a president, yes, who is, uh, who's elected every year.
There's a, I wanna call it a power struggle, but there's a, there's a movement right now, um, between two people, somebody from the High Desert and a councilwoman from Ranch Kukamunga and-
That's not, that's not Sandbag, that's appointment by the city selection committee, which is not Sandbag, that's a, that's the mayors of each town, meeting to appoint someone to LAFCO. So, it has nothing to do with Sandbag.
I thought it was Sandbag. Okay, forget that.
Okay, so we've designated that, any reports of councilmen? Any reports of officers? Then the city council is adjourned and we have two more agendas to accomplish. First, on my list is the successor agency, the redevelopment agency. Are there any deletional or additional items?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on items not agendized?
Is deletional a word?
And I declare it to be so.
Awesome.
I declare this deletional day. Okay, the consent calendar.
I'll move it.
Um, any discussion, any opposition, hearing none, it's approved, uh, that meeting is adjourned. Next, we have the housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on anything on this one? This is your last chance. Okay, no takers, consent calendar?
I'll move it, question on an item?
Okay, is there a second?
Um, which, which item?
Uh, the, the demands register, what is Tricler Association and what do they do for us?
I had the same question, so I will second the motion if we get an answer.
Okay, who has the answer? What's Tricler?
This is consulting.
The, yes, the Tricler Corporation is, um, is a company that assists me with the, with the housing programs and the, and the home buyer programs. They are the-
You guys are jacksy.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so that's weird.
Jack's way.
Ah, okay, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, any further discussion, any opposition, hearing none, it's approved, uh, any chair or member reports, any reports of officers, hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming, we appreciate your faithful attendance.
Yes.
Yeah.